Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this Monday, June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-two at ten o'clock AM. Please pray with us if you care to, and then we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
If you care to, please bow with us. Dear Lord, please lead us in the right direction. The nation is hurting with some decisions and some are happy, some are sad. Please lead us in the right way in that, and please look over the families. There were some accidents over the weekend with some county employees and some civilians. Please look over those families and give them light. With that being said, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Discover downtown Franklin. About the sixty-fifth celebration of the Franklin Holiday Lighting.
I think it's been here sixty-five years ago. A candle walking around.
A single candle.
A single candle.
May I have one, please?
They did.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jessica Giles. I've been here before. I'm the executive director for Discover Downtown Franklin, and we are the entity in charge of fundraising for the holiday lighting. So it's a joint effort between ourselves and the Franklin Parks Department on hosting that event each year. And I wanted to bring you some information that has kind of come up in recent years, and it spurred our desire to host a fundraiser this year in honor of the sixty-fifth celebration of the holiday lighting. So it's a longstanding tradition, not only Franklin, but for all county residents in Johnson County. The two papers that I handed you, one is showing not only the fundraising breakdown of kind of how we collect the funds each year, but on the backside, it shows the fundraising versus the annual cost of just the installation of the lights. So there are other costs associated with the holiday lighting, but I really primarily wanted to focus on the cost of the installation. So what you'll see is that just from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, the cost of insulation increased around ten thousand dollars. And we utilize Primary Grounds. They're a very professional entity that have worked with us since two thousand fourteen. And as of last year, the cost of the insulation increased because of, one, the cost of labor, which is no surprise, it's happening everywhere. Two, the trees that were wrapping every year, especially on East Court Street and West Court Street, they've grown substantially, which have required an increase in materials as well as an increase in the cost of labor associated with that on top of the general increase in cost of labor. And while we've had meetings with, his name is Dan Tharp, who is the head of that company, to try and lessen the costs for this year, we're trying to come up with creative ways, like uplighting and everything. He's still saying that to pay for something of this magnitude and what the people are used to, it's going to remain level around thirty-two thousand dollars. So what Discover Downtown Franklin has decided to do in celebration of the sixty-fifth year is host a fundraiser, which is, this is the other sheet that I handed to you. It's called DIFT sixty-five. It's going to be an online giving fundraiser facilitated through the One Cause software through the Johnson County Community Foundation. So they allow some of the organizations who hold funds through them to utilize that software. It's going to be a text to give or just a virtual online thing similar to Franklin College, or the foundation themselves have hosted virtual fundraisers. And we would like to raise money specifically through the foundation to put either in the endowment fund that is held there through the lighting that we, as the fundraising body, have access to specifically to pay for the installation of lights, but it's not limited to us. If we were no longer in charge of fundraising, the endowment access would pass whoever then was in charge of the fundraising efforts. But also, we would like to facilitate it through a pass-through fund so that it could either go to the amount that we pull each year, or it could go towards this year or next year's lighting. Since Discover Downtown Franklin, along with the endowment fund, does have a separate fund outside of our general operating account that we use for the lighting each year. So what you'll see, especially on this little one sheet, is that on this side with the little chart, that annually we pull around sixty-six hundred dollars from the fund, so it's not covering a substantial amount of our fundraising that we have to do on an annual basis. So that leaves us kind of pressured to then fundraise around twenty thousand dollars from either local sponsors, or that's why we instituted the tree sponsorship. So where all the signs are popping up all over town. But we're just trying to sort of lessen the pressure to make sure that the tradition carries on for years to come, or that even, not only are we able to sustain the lighting, but that we can add to the flair of it to make people, you know, really want to visit our county, or at least, you know, Franklin at the time of the lighting. So again, back to the fundraiser, this is a virtual fundraiser. Our goal is sixty-five thousand dollars, and the vast majority of that would be put into the endowment funds. The other would be used to pay for the lighting for this year and next year. And why I'm here today is to request, typically the county gives around five hundred dollars towards the lighting around Christmas time. And I was wanting to request not necessarily a match amount, it's kind of called a challenge amount from a virtual giving perspective, but something that entices other people to give. So if we were to say the county has, if you, if four hundred people donate throughout the span of two hours, then the county has agreed to give three thousand dollars. So it's something that encourages others to give towards the cause. So it's not just the five hundred dollars just going towards an installation each year. So that is my request. I was hoping that you would consider giving three thousand dollars towards the fundraiser this year. That would in part also go towards the installation of the lights.
If you don't get four hundred, what happens?
It's really, it's, the challenges can be whatever the match determines it. So we have other, like, individual matches or challenges, and they could say something like, like, up to that amount. So up to four hundred, then we'll give, so it still allows, even less than that, you can still have that full amount.
And just for the other two commissioners, I met with Jess and Mayor Steve on this matter. I've been involved in the holiday lighting since I've been here to degree. But I asked the mayor of City of Franklin what they were giving, and they're going to give three thousand is what they're going to give toward this. And the point I want to make is, is this is really a whole county event. I mean, this draws in people from all over, even other counties. It's a pretty big event every year I've been there, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that the commissioners consider the three thousand dollars. We skipped a couple of years, made up for it, one year, gave a thousand something, but I'd like to see us do something for this, at least this special time, being involved in it like I have been, and I think it's a worthy cause. The other thing I want to make commissioners aware of is, at some point in time, they're going to try to do some downlighting in the trees to save the money of wrapping the trees. And when we do construction over there, when we tear out the sidewalks and redo all that area over there, which we've already gotten a bond, we can, at that time, roughen some conduit to get over to the trees, because everything will be opened up. And I've agreed to try to put that in that bond money that we've got set aside for that, to run those over there, so they'll at least have power to those trees. But then the ability to lessen their cost down the road by doing some alternate lighting at some of the trees instead of wrapping those trees. So I just think this is a great event. I think it's a good time for people to get together and celebrate not only the holiday lighting, but the county and the city of Franklin. So just wanted to put that out there so everybody was aware that I had had some discussion on this. I don't want these two gentlemen to come in here blind on what I've been kind of doing, so just wanted to put that out there.
Have you been before the tourism board?
I'm going on their next meeting, so is that maybe the thirteenth? I'm going to present for their next meeting, ask them to be a match as well.
Yeah, they could find the whole thing for you.
That would be nice.
Yeah, the good thing about the, what I like about these two projects is both the bicentennial alley activation, which is what I went before Festival Country beforehand, and the holiday lighting are separate from Discover Downtown Franklin fundraising efforts for ourselves. So I feel okay asking other entities to help out in terms of that, but so I have spoken with Ken about this as well.
Did you make that a motion?
I will make that a motion if.
He's asking for the three thousand, I'll make a motion to. Up to three thousand dollars.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for all you're doing. I know you're putting a lot of time and effort in, in a lot of stuff, so.
Oh, it's worth it. Thank you so much for your time.
I do appreciate it. Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization, Central Indiana Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy.
Good morning, commissioners and members of the public. Anna Gremling here from the Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'm before you today instead of Rose Scoville. She's in San Diego, taking some time off. If you remember, Rose Scoville presented for about ten minutes on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy on April eleventh. Just a reminder, this was a plan that we're required to do for the Economic Development Administration. So when grants come from Johnson County or the region, right, you get a little bit of a gold star. They like to see this plan in place when you go after Economic Development Administration federal funding. The next step on this is we are going to, if approved, before you today, right, we actually have to go around to all of the regions and seek approval. Assuming that hurdle is cleared, we are going to create an exploratory committee to look at developing an economic development district. This is encouraged by the EDA on a federal level. Again, they are looking for cooperation on a regional level to strengthen applications as they go in at the federal level. So just a reminder, the said document is really around three strategies, and it's talent, innovation in place for the region. And there's, in each of those categories, a number of strategies for the entire region. There are questions?
On page ten. Number three. Says Johnson County not responsible. We're talking about culverts and bridges. Not responsible if within the corporate limits of a city or a town. Was there something in advance to that that I missed? Because we are responsible, right, Luke, for bridges and culverts within corporate limits.
Is this page ten of the actual plan?
Page ten of what I've got here. Resolution number twenty-two. The draft.
Yeah, absolutely. The county highway department would be responsible for that.
And then also, it goes on to say that Johnson County is responsible for the provision of public transit service. Well, we're not responsible, I don't think, for the provision of it. We have the responsibility of selecting a provider, so they might want to look at that. And then. Always love reading these kind of, kind of plans. It gives me a chance to pick, pick out the needless now. Where it goes on to say that there's estimated that five point six percent of the residents of Johnson County speak a language other than English. Well, I often wondered about, I took Spanish in school. I could speak it a little bit. Would I qualify under that five point six? How did you come up with five point six percent? Just curious.
I assume they use census data to come up with some of those demographics.
So apparently they're basing, basing it on the ethnicity of a person, not necessarily whether they're able to speak a second language, right?
My guess is they use census data for it.
Page eleven was my favorite, and that was environmental justice.
That is required on the federal level. That was one of the areas we're required to have in the plan, because the federal government is focused on that.
Other than that. I don't have a problem with it necessarily. It's just kind of a broad.
It is. It's kind of that broad-based framework document that we need to file with the federal government. I would like Commissioner West to be involved in the exploratory committee as we look at next steps.
I'll move to approve that.
Who's she? You.
Oh, Lord. That's why I moved so quickly. I'd move to approve the whole thing, and Commissioner West sitting on this for us.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I have a motion. Do you want a second?
I did.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Okay, sorry, getting back to my schedule here. Elected officials, department heads, community corrections, juvenile division. For some reason.
Damon Cox, Assistant Director, just approval for our twenty-two, twenty-three grant for a provider for the Department of Child Services.
I'm gonna stand.
Are you a partner in this company?
I'm their landlord.
I move to approve.
Now, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, sir. Assessor requests exception for vacation time for an employee.
Hi, Mark.
I have a motion and a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed.
Good to see you anyway.
Thanks for telling.
Yeah.
Auditor approval of scope appendix to two thousand twenty-one engagement letter with Baker Tilly, USLOP, pending legal review.
I move to approve. Second.
And motion second, any further?
Pending legal.
Pending legal. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I'd just like to mention that since the state forced us for this gap.
Yeah.
Here's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, not to mention the twenty-plus thousand the state charges for state board of accounts to come down and spend a few days with us.
It's a little higher than that. On what it costs to come down, just so you know.
I mean, it was on there, it was twenty-one or twenty-three thousand. It was in the claims.
It would be probably a secondary payment, I would think. Yeah, closing, it's a little more expensive than that.
You know, I have a suggestion. You could take that money and hire a CPA.
That idea. Quietly.
Moving on, health department. Proven to apply for crisis COVID nineteen supplemental workforce sustainment testing grant that's a mouthful.
Is she on?
No.
I move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Prosecutor approval of Braden Business Systems maintenance contract for copiers pending legal review. And motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Pending legal, I guess, for, you want to do one and two?
Yeah.
They're both on the coppers and shredders.
Oh, yeah. Revising the motion.
Let's just go ahead and.
We haven't voted, have we voted?
Yeah, let's just go ahead and approve that.
Okay, motion to approve the shredder, pending legal.
And motion a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Got to keep it legal. Anyway, Luke, I'm not even going to, I'll let you get into it.
Thank you. Won't take too long. Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. First item is a request for your approval and execution of a engineering services agreement to provide right-of-way monumentation on our completed County Road four fifty west project. In particular, this monumentation will mark the property corners and the limits of the right-of-way that was acquired during that project. In hindsight, this should have been included in the original design contract, but these markers are helpful both for us and for the property owners to determine in the field where those right-of-way limits are.
What kind of monuments are those, just the ones the states use?
That we will be doing the standard capped rebar. There, we did discuss potentially doing the concrete right-of-way markers. I prefer those, but there is additional cost for that. So at the very least, we'll have these marked with rebar cap by the surveyor that does the work so that we can find those in the field with a metal detector pretty easily.
Is that where they just drive the rebar on the ground with a ribbon?
Yes, there'll probably be, there'll be a cap, a round cap on the top of it.
Hey, Luke, how much more would it be for the monuments? Do you have any idea? I mean.
I do.
Yeah. Monuments are visible.
Well, you don't have, you don't have to go looking for rebar under trees and.
It's three hundred, an additional three hundred dollars per marker. There are quite a few markers through there, roughly, I mean, if I had to guess, we're probably looking at double or almost double what it's going to cost to place just the capped rebar. There are some downsides to those concrete markers, particularly for the property owners when it comes to mowing and maintaining. Sometimes we will set those flush with the ground so they can be mowed over, but doesn't necessarily make them any easier to find.
So you're talking thirty markers?
Probably.
Really?
Yeah.
Hey. I will move to approve with just the standard contract we have. But in the future, when we go to start pinning some of these corners, I would like to maybe make that inclusive for monuments. And I think from an engineer standpoint, they could probably, maybe, I don't know, thirty's quite a bit on that area right there. But I would like to see it from the future on, maybe look at the monuments if you can.
Their standard on the federal aid jobs, this was a locally funded job, which is why they weren't automatically included.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah. I knew you would.
These little dots on the exhibit marker.
Should be. Though, I'm not sure that encompasses. Yeah, I'm not sure that that encompasses all of them.
Okay.
I'd have to check the count. It may not be thirty. That was a conservative number, but it would be a pretty substantial sum.
Well, the rebar works good where you got, where you're putting it in asphalt or something of that nature. But monuments, whether it's a grassy area, they, I would think they would be better anyway.
I prefer them, but I don't have any in my front yard either.
Maybe we can take that out of our plans. Monument can't be that expensive. It's just the labor of digging a little, set it in.
You have to purchase the marker as well. There's actually a standard drawing on how those are supposed to be cast.
Really?
Yeah. We could come up with our own design if we wanted to, but it wouldn't save us any money from using the standards.
I made a motion.
Yeah, I'm just filling in the gap till you guys.
Did you second?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear that second. That's my bad.
I probably went very loud.
You're a little hard to hear right now. I have a motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next item is our request for approval and execution of an addendum to our Bridge sixty-six design engineering agreement with VS Engineering. This addendum is an additional four thousand dollars, which is required for the environmental document. In particular, some archaeological survey that is required for that, that we did not anticipate due to the scope of the project.
Would you find some ashes or some from an ancient civilization?
I sure hope not.
They're going to find bones, I guarantee you that.
We haven't, well. Probably not human, but.
Not human bones. Yeah, put it to you that way.
The bridge project is a rehabilitation project, which typically does not disturb a lot of ground, and which is why we did not anticipate having to perform the archaeological survey. Now, this is the lowest level of survey, so there's no Indiana Jones coming out to find anything exciting. But indot is requiring this, so before our environmental document can be approved.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, a quiet second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, number three.
Last item is a request to approach council at their next meeting for an additional appropriation in the cumulative bridge fund for our Bridge six oh five project. This is a federal aid project, but the design funds are funded at one hundred percent locally. This appropriation would appropriate those design funds for that contract.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under Board of Commissioners, number one has been scratched. Number two is acceptance of Brian Alvey's resignation from the Convention Visitor and Tourism Board. So moved, sorry. Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. I'd like to oppose that and keep him on there, but I don't think he'd be happy with that at this point. Anyway, he did a good job. I want to thank him for the time he put in. He was very, very vital in the last year and a half of this thing. Now, appointment of new member to the Convention Visitor and Tourism Board.
I'll throw a name out.
Throw a name out.
Danny Causey.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Danny Causey. Or not be Dan Causey.
Danny.
Sorry.
It is Danny.
Dan.
Have a motion.
Somebody else is throwing a name out.
I don't have one to throw out, so.
No, he'd be good. He's discovered downtown Franklin. He's very involved in the community.
I did have a recommendation for him. I do know that, but it's, I don't know Mr. Causey. I have a motion second. Yeah. All those favors signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. Acceptance of Tony Horton's resignation from the M D Fire Protection Board.
So moved. Second.
I didn't know Tony lived here. Good fitness guy, though. Motion second, any further?
He's got a chain of restaurants, I think, over in Ohio, too.
Really? I didn't know that. Health food thing?
No, it's a don't, it's a donut shop kind of thing.
This is a donut shop. There you go.
Tony would be eating dough. He might. They'd be like gluten-free and all that. Anyway, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Appointment of new member to the M D Fire Protection District Board.
I would move for Mr. Heath Bransett. That doesn't violate anything with him being the nine-one-one director. Okay, then he's good. No conflict, no conflict. That's, I just wanna make sure there's no conflict.
Thank you, so.
That's easy, man.
He is the only eligible one that put in. He is the only eligible one to put in.
Yeah.
Did you?
She only got one, so. I guess I'll second that.
I got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post. Motion carries.
I was just looking at John Canary's email, Bert Farmer, twenty-one ninety-nine. You know, John, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah. Charlie.
Uh, approval of Brayden, Brayden Business System Maintenance Contract for Commissioners Lower Level Copier Pending Legal Review.
With to approve.
The copier's working great, though, just so we know. Yeah, so far. My motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Post. Motion carries. Approval of Title Six Plan. Any questions or comments?
It's kind of a waste of motion, but I'll move to approve. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't have anything.
Check.
Trying to read.
Not working today.
Multitasking. I was just went to a training seminar and said, you can't really do that. There's no such thing, you know, right? And motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. Opening seal quotes for West Annex Landscaping Project.
Looks like we just got one. From. Our outdoor designs.
Who has done this course before?
TR Outdoor Designs. Their bid is forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars, four-three, one-five-four point zero zero.
First thing I would ask is what, did we have anything? What was the budget or did we have a budget set for this?
Yeah, it's in the bottom fifty.
So it was under the budgeted amount.
Yeah, and I was involved in this with Wes, so the, the design is a really good design. It will. Take care of some issues we're having outside on the west side and the south side of the building, so.
Okay. I'll move to approve that.
Have a motion second, any further?
Well, maybe.
Well, I mean, do you want Wes to make sure that everything is. And then we can, we can accept the low bid and do the contract at the next meeting?
Yeah, that'd be fine. So I'll just give it to Wes to review. More homework, Wes. Is that one, did you figure out what?
I think it's for the next one. I think I can see who signed it, and I think I know what kind of.
And the motion for.
I was gonna check and see, make sure this wasn't, this isn't a secondary.
A motion on that last one. Unless you wanna say.
Wes to review it.
Look at it. Yeah, that could be your motion.
Come back to the next meeting with recommendation.
And the contract.
I have a. Nod from Commissioner West, so that's a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Post. Motion carries. Museer.
This was another.
Think it's the other.
For the boiler project. This one would be for Jason. To review.
Correct. Jason.
Uh, it's from Irish Mechanical Services, and their bid is eighty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, eight-six-five-six-five point zero zero.
Ouch. This, again, this is a, this, we were aware of this, this is in the G O B, so.
That's the landscaping bid. No, that's a boiler.
The boiler replacement boiler.
Okay.
Number. Two.
So. Outdoor Designs was the landscaping.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that the actual boiler? They use high water over there.
It's a chiller boiler. It's what we've always had over there.
Is that most patients given today's technology?
The new ones are pretty.
It is.
Efficient. And not they were big tanks you put in your basement.
I don't know anything about them, so.
It's, it's a replacement of the, the one that's saying, and this is, we, we were aware of this. This is not something that's new. This is, I actually. This was put in the general obligation bond, so we've got the money for it. But we knew it was coming.
Within budget.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
I'll move to have Jason review these and bring it back with contract for the next meeting.
Second.
Have a motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We'll have a few more, so just hang in there. We're, we're getting there. Number ten has been scratched. Uh, number eleven, approval of Johns County Employee Handbook Revisions.
Well. Only one I. I've got two. On that, but. I do, on page thirty-four. Urgency closures. I still object to the hand. Or judicial officers.
That's, I took it out. That's why I took it out.
You did, then it once stretched out on mine, I don't think. I'm pretty sure it is ready to get looked at again this morning.
In the packet, the one in the packet?
Should be out of it.
It says, when operations are officially closed for emergency cadations, Commissioners and/or Judicial Officers not struck through online.
Do you have the right packet? Do you have the right packet?
Probably not. If, if you're telling, you took it out.
Well, look at the red line, then. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's fricking.
I know it is.
So take it out?
Yes, sir.
So it's just Commissioners. Oh, good, thank you. I did, and then on page eighty-eight. Prohibited. Uh, uses while driving a county vehicle. You got heard yelling. I, I thought we might wanna take that out, because you might be yelling to somebody to get out of the way before you run over them. Just. This best.
Leaving in traffic, yelling, making obscene gestures.
I think that was already.
I, I maybe, maybe we could, maybe yelling. And, and making obscene gestures. To clarify that. But that's a, that's a good catch. I'll give him that one. You know, he read it.
Yeah. Of course, you know, my wife's Italian. She'd give you this. That's an obscene gesture, I think, in Italy. I'm not sure.
I usually just wave my fist.
Anyway, that's all I got. Well, thank you for making that correction on the closers. Appreciate it. So.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve.
Mr. Walt.
I'll second with those amendments.
Have a motion second with the amendments, any further discussion? Yeah. I just wanted to make sure you're all. My parts are free and clear. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post. Motion carries.
This is our, kind of our annual adjustment to the employee.
Yeah, and I'll tell you too, I did, I sent it to um. The courts just to make sure that they had a chance to see it, but I think most of the changes pertain to the fleet policy, so I'm not sure how interested they are. But if they happen to come up with something that's controversial, we can, we can address it later.
We'll be addressing something later anyway.
We're always addressing something.
Yeah, it's a living, breathing document that changes all the time. You know, business claims and credit card.
Well. Under claims, there was a claim for the Board of Commissioners. United States Treasury, twenty-three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, fifty-five cents for employee group health. Insurance. I didn't understand that.
Did you look at the claim?
No, I just, well, I saw the claim, but I.
I have to pull the claim and look at it since it came from your department, Ron. That would be that they submitted the claim to be paid, so I'd have to check with the girls and see what it was.
That's reasonable, so you can check it for me.
And that probably already knows if she did decline, but I'll check with them.
Superior Court one had a hundred and two dollar charge for Franklin Elk's Lodge for dues and subscriptions. That truly can't be right, can it?
Sounds like the right of mail.
Yeah, I don't think Kevin, Kevin Shirley not charging his membership off to the. Court, but. Anyway, but.
That's not this, Kevin, okay?
I don't see how that would be.
You know, and there was a, there was a.
By something, I don't know. Yeah, it was an idea to keep someone up.
There, there was a charge in the corner. For a hundred and twenty-seven dollars, T-shirt Express, which I was not gonna bring up. I was not gonna mention that until I saw the one in the Health Department for T-shirt Express for twelve hundred and ninety-eight dollars. For us to have clothing. Question that. Here's a good one. The corner had a, a charge of a hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents for express car wash. And that's car washes for an entire year, and I don't know if that's one a week or. Whatever, I was gonna, I was hoping it might could be, or I was gonna ask. I, you know.
That's a ten ninety-nine dollar, it's ten ninety-nine a month for as many washes as you. Do.
Well, this was a hundred and thirty-one forty, that's for a year.
Paid for the full year. You know, that, the ten ninety-nine times whatever, twelve. That's the monthly charge. We get that special discount for all the.
Well, the ten, but this was for a whole year. That was my question, if it's once a week.
Well, if he bought a whole pass for a whole year.
Yeah. And that's where I'm going. That's, that's once a week, it's like two dollars and fifty cents a wash. We're paying ten ninety-nine. For a month, once a month.
It's not once a month, you wash it, how many ever.
For one wash.
No, it's just.
How many times?
You do.
It's unlimited.
It's unloaded, yeah. That's a special deal they do.
Yeah, I thought that was maybe a pretty good deal.
It is a good deal.
Yeah.
I paid twenty-nine ninety-nine a month for that same deal personally. Yeah, I get screwed. Kinda gets a better deal.
You oughta tell them who you are.
They don't care.
Fleet had one Grand Harbor Resort for five hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents, huh? I don't remember sending Bob or anybody to Grand Harbor. That's in Iowa. So I might check on that. Community Corrections had one, Amazon, my favorite company, for bicycle repair, seven dollars, ninety-nine cents.
Who was that?
Community Correction, you know, a lot of other people they service out there ride bicycles, but I didn't think they'd be fixing their bicycles for them, but they may have. And then adult probation had snacks and water for T B R I, which I don't know what that acronym is for. Two chargers, seventy-seven, forty, and three fifty-one, seventy-five. That's a lot of snacks and water. Four hundred and twenty-seven.
I would assume that would be the training.
You got that.
Which is probably.
I wrote down what you said. Yes, I don't have it memorized.
It'd be a grant.
We didn't have a manifest from Superior to and. Surveyor. I got, I'm gonna go back and look at the ones that didn't send a manifest last month, because maybe, remember we said that maybe if they, then in two months in a row, we cancel their credit card.
If you had a timing issue last month that you probably need to consider, I think there was a timing issue last month with how the meetings fell that you probably wanna consider when you think about that.
Their excuse.
No, I think that's legit.
It, it was legitimate. The meeting was that morning and the deadline was the next day at noon. So there were quite a few of them that actually made the deadline. It's just because the way the meetings fell, we, we didn't have them available to present. So the meeting was just a few day, uh, just timed before, so when it washed out, I believe there was only like two that didn't get a ban on time as well.
I'll check with you. Other than that, I move to approve, I guess.
Second. Have a motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carrier, carries, motion carrier.
Carries.
It, it almost feels like. Commissioners, man, it's six thirteen, two thousand twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Have a motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. Beverly comment, limited to five minutes per person, please. Do we have anyone that has a?
Moves adjourned.
I have a motion second, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.